2009, and our flag salute today is going to be led by Supervisor Euler.
Let's signify the flag of the United States of America, and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ann, would you do the meeting procedures, please?
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of June 9th, 2009. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has the discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cellphones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. Is there any public comment? Would you please give us your name and an address, please, for the record?
Good morning, all. Happy birthday, Robert. I'm Angela Tati with the Arts Council of Placer County, Placer Arts. On behalf of everyone at the Arts Council and the friends of the library and the Placer County Historical Society, we would like to invite the public to celebrate Placer County's first Carnegie Library's Centennial Celebration this Thursday at 175 Allman Street in Auburn. At 7:00 PM, there's going to be a comment session with the rundown of the history of the building and an unveiling of a new public art installation in the garden of the library. So we welcome you. That's all part of the Auburn Art Walk. So there are 40 venues free to the public. We welcome families and children. And this year, the Library Garden Summer Series, which is four free Sunday evening concerts in the Library Garden Theater right behind the domes here, will begin in June. So we have two Sundays in June, June 21st, starting with the Capitol Jazz Project, starts at 7:00 PM that evening, and then it moves in through July. And before that, we have a new World Music Festival that's also free and open to the public at the School Park Preserve in Auburn. So those are some things coming up that we wanted you and all the members of the public to be aware of, and thank you for your support. Ann, I'll pass out these materials.
Thank you. Is there anyone else under public comment? I will close public comment. Next item is the Supervisor Committee reports. I'll start on my left, Jennifer. Jim?
I guess I have one, just to make sure.
You're a little busy, huh?
I'll let you know I'll be there with a proclamation at the Carnegie Library Celebration. And just so the board will know, Auburn was the first Placer County recipient of the Carnegie Library funds, and Lincoln followed suit after our leadership. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to report briefly on our trip to Washington, DC last week. The Friday before, Supervisor Weigant and I and Tom Miller met with Bill George, who is Congressman McClintock's press secretary, along with Brandon Muncie, who is the Regional Director for the Corps of Engineers in the Sacramento office. We went down there to kind of explain the process of our project, how far along we've gotten with it, and actually the role that the Corps of Engineers plays in that entire process. So we spent, what, about an hour with Mr. George, trying to explain to him where we're going with that. We, on June the 2nd, we started our meeting with our Legislative Advocates Hall of the Night, and then they prepped us as far as the meetings that we had throughout the day. 10 o'clock that day, we met with Roger Cockrell, who is a Senate Energy and Water Appropriations Subcommittee member. We've met with him several times going back there and explained, you know, where we are in the process. He was waiting for the President's budget. He hadn't got the President's budget, so wasn't sure how that was all going to roll out. From there, we met with Jason Arbitron Alberton, who works for the Senate Environment and Public Works Committee, and again, explained where we were in the process. At 11:30, we met with the Army Corps of Engineers Headquarters with Mr. Muncie from the local corps, and had a very, I thought it was encouraging, report from the Deputy Director of the Western Region, Ava Benvenidas.
Benvenidas.
Benvenidas. And I let her know that you were apologetic about not being able, you sent your regrets about not being able to make it there. And then in the afternoon, we met with Ryan Hunt from the Office of Senator Feinstein. Senator Boxer has requested $10 million in the federal appropriations budget, and Senator Feinstein has requested $2 million for our regional wastewater treatment project. So we're encouraged from the Senate side, from the Senate side, that the potential of getting some significant federal dollars for the regional wastewater treatment project. Wednesday, we met with Congressman McClintock. He gave us about 20 minutes. It was, I wouldn't have to say it was discouraging. He kind of questioned why we would even be thinking about doing this in the economic times, the state is, as we know, is having difficulty, and according to Congressman McClintock, the federal government is operating on borrowed money since April the 26th, and couldn't understand why we would even think about going regional in this economic times. But we did do our best to try to explain to him the process and where the core office is part of the project. So anyhow, all in all, I think it was a very successful trip, although we were discouraged by Congressman McClintock's lack of support. I particularly want to thank Anita Yoder and Mike Fitch and Robert Miller for this very nice brochure that we were able to pass out. Did an excellent job explaining the project and where we are. It was very easy to understand, and we handed that out to everybody we met with. And then I also want to thank Mary Herdigan for her role in setting up all the meetings and working with Hall of the Night. Jim Durfee, our Facilities Director, accompanied us as well. So anyhow, I just wanted to give the board a report on our meeting.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yes, you could have told Congressman McClintock that the rules that they come down from the EPA and stuff are making us move forward with this, in case he didn't understand it.
You know, we did try to explain that, but I think he wanted us to go change the rules.
Okay. Lots of luck there. I'll go to the right over here, Robert. Kurt?
Yeah, a couple things. First of all, last week, Golden Sea Job Training Agency met. We approved our proposed budget for 910. And interestingly, a lot of the stimulus dollars are showing up on the job training side. It looks like the proposed budget for 910 is about three times what it was for 89. Strong emphasis being placed right now on some summer outreach programs, youth summer outreach programs for jobs, for employment. But we're going to be paying particular attention to some of the more rural job needs, and so I recommended to our staff that they contact Supervisor Montgomery, our staff meaning the JPA staff. They contact Supervisor Montgomery, but also would encourage any of you that know of any particular needs within your district, let me know. Let Jason Buckingham, who's our Executive Director, let them know, because right now, in that particular budget anyway, there's a bunch of money sitting there, and they're directed to figure out how to spend it. So if you have any thoughts, please feel free to share them with me. Then yesterday, I received a phone call from Celia McAdams at PCTPA, but on behalf of Sparta, if you know Sparta's the lead agency, on the Parkway, we have continued to engage the agencies on alternative five, the alternative five LEDPA concurrence. Don't know what happened within the last month, but evidently she, all of a sudden feels, after a meeting that they had toward the end of last week, that there may be movement in getting the agencies to concur on the alternative five LEDPA. So obviously, it would be of significance if we're able to get that. We decided as board to move ahead with initiating Tier Two environmental work anyway, regardless of the LEDPA. So we're already moving down that road on the alternative five. But obviously, it would be helpful to this process if we had that LEDPA concurrence. So that's where we are.
Thank you. I don't have any committee reports, but I did want to honor a colleague of ours who's having a birthday today, Mr. Robert Weigant, and ask you if you'd join me in singing "Happy Birthday" to him.
Can I leave?
Yeah.
How much would you pay us not to sing?
My salary.
Not enough.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Robert. Happy birthday to you. And many more. Well, I was thinking about having a moment of silence, but you haven't quite got that yet. Are we early enough till we can do the 9:15?
I think we can do the 9:15.
Okay, let's move on to the, oh, that's consent. See, I got so carried away with my singing that, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to adoption consent agenda.
Roll call.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Weigant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
I.
Rockland.
Yes. Now we'll move on to item number one, and Supervisor Montgomery will handle this presentation.
Thank you, and you'll all have to bear with me. This is my first commendation, and I'm actually really excited about it, because I was a total Lego junkie as a kid growing up. And I've been following your very, very exciting story in the paper and online, and I'm just so pleased today to be able to give this commendation. And this is what it looks like. I'm going to read from larger type, because my eyes are old, but this is what we have to say. In the matter of commendation, recognizing the Meadow Vista-based LEGO Guard team members, Faith Oaks 13, Alejandro Vega 12, Andrew Wood 12, Bobby Huckins 12, Aiden Potts 11, and Drew Oaks 10, and I hope I pronounced all your names correctly, under the leadership of Coach Heidi Buck and mentor Alan Levezu, for winning the first-place Innovation Award at the FIRST, which stands for For Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology, LEGO League Children's Climate Action Summit held in Copenhagen, Denmark in May 2009. Whereas the LEGO Guards is a local robotics club located in the community of Meadow Vista and is made up of students from the Placer County Office of Education Independent Home Study, and whereas the LEGO Guards achieved numerous awards throughout the various local and state levels of competitions, including, out of 24 teams, mind you, the first-place Champions Award and first-place robot performance at the Sacramento FLL Regional Tournament in December 2008, and, out of 64 teams, first place for project presentation, second place for robot performance, the craziest robot attachment award, and the outstanding coach/mentor of the year award at the Northern California FLL Championship Tournament. And whereas there were over 13,000 competitors from over 40 countries at the Northern California FLL State Champion Tournament, of which the LEGO Guards were one of the six finalist teams selected to move forward to the Global Summit Competition in Copenhagen, Denmark, and whereas their idea would use solar-powered video cameras mounted throughout the forest, which are linked to the internet, they would provide a free screensaver, which would let the viewers enjoy the photos of the forest while also looking out for wildfires. Upon sighting a fire, viewers could press a key on their keyboards to notify local officials of the fire, with a limit of incoming signals set at the fire stations to avoid excessive notifications or false alarms. And whereas finally, their innovative idea won the LEGO Guards from Meadow Vista first place at the Global Children's Climate Action Summit in Copenhagen, Denmark, and the opportunity to implement their idea into action through an agreement with Sony. Now therefore, let it be known that on this ninth day of June 2009, the Placer County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in commending this exceptional group of young inventors on their outstanding achievement and for their inspiration to all youth to put their vision into action and for helping keep our forests safe and our environment healthy through early detection of wildfires. Thank you. Now we're actually going to have, we're going to have a demonstration of the project right here, so as they set that up, I will give this to you, and individual commendations to each of the kids.
That's pretty neat, okay. Denmark can win, huh? Something watch it, watch it, so you're something they get a suit.
And I do have to mention, while they're setting this up, the Auburn Journal ran just a terrific article on June 1st about the relationship that the LEGO Guards is setting up with Sony. Sony is basically joining in a partnership with the local group to put together a demonstration project for this, actually in our forests here in Placer County. We're hoping in the Tahoe Basin, I'm hoping in the Tahoe Basin. And I just think it's so wonderful that something that just kind of seems like a fun, kinky, cool thing actually has some real practical applications that will benefit our entire county and the state of California. So again, you guys, you're awesome. You did a great job, and show me what you got.
Hi, viewers. I'm Faith, and welcome to another Climate Today. Last week, we talked with climatologists from the Western Regional Climate Center, who showed its research that Placer County is getting hotter and drier. This week's topic is wildfire, and our community has also had a lot of problems with wildfires. Do you know that the forest fires in our area from over the summer released more than 28 million tons of CO2 into our air? For more on wildfire problems in Placer County, let's go over to Drew, who's at our local cowfire station.
Thanks, Faith. We see that there have been lots of wildfires this summer. In fact, we spend most of the summer indoors due to all the smoke. More information on wildfire happening, I'll have you follow, a local cowfire.
Yeah, I've been a cowfire grabber for 20 years, and the longest ones in the past few years have been the worst. The fire season used to be smaller and predictable. Now it's larger and out of control. The sooner we can find an outbreak fire and hit the target, the easier it is to control. Right now, we only have three fire watchtowers, and because of budget cuts, they're only running at fall season.
Thanks for the information, Bobby. Back to you, Faith. Thanks, Drew. The larger and more controllable wildfires are pouring more and more CO2 into our air. In fact, a recent study shows that over the past 14 years, there's been a 1.5 degree rise in temperature, and in over the same time period, there are 14 times more wildfires in western forests. Now, I've heard that Spain has a similar problem to Placer County, so let's go over to Aiden, who's in Barcelona, Spain.
Thanks, Faith. I'm here in Barcelona, trying to talk to them, for a small firefight. Andrew, could you tell me what your approach is by extension, please, then?
Well, we have the same problem as Placer County. Well, the fire detection technologies are emerging, and the fire watches in San Diego are very expensive and unreliable. Nothing can spot fires better than a human eye. That's right, we also use volunteers in our watchtowers. But when they quit, we're in trouble.
Thanks, Adrian. Back to you, Faith.
Thanks, Aiden. Speaking of wildfire problems, my guest today, Mr. Vega, a forest guard, has an innovative solution for early wildfire detection.
Well, thanks for having me, Faith. The Forest Guard Early Wildfire Protection System uses solar-powered cameras mounted on poles situated throughout the forest. From there, broadcasts information to a hub computer at a watchtower anywhere in the world, and then broadcasts this information to a web server on the internet. And from there, anyone on their computer can download a free screensaver program, and then view the images from the cameras on their computer. And from there, if they saw a fire in any of the pictures, they can report it to your local fire station.
Wow, a free screensaver? What does it look like?
Well, I have a long system installed on my computers you'd like to see?
Oh, that'd be great. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone can be a forest guard by installing this free screensaver on their computer. It randomly gets live images from the cameras in the forest and displays them on your screen. While you're watching these photos, you're also being a set of eyes for a possible fire. Thousands of people all over the world will be watching these photos, and if they ever see your picture...
Excuse me, I hate to interrupt your speech, but I think there's a fire in this picture. I mean, just the last picture.
Okay, so I'll get the space part of it back. You're right, there is. Okay, so we have to report fire, and yes, we see a fire. Okay, now it's going to be reported to the right people in the right areas.
Okay, so let's check with Drew and cowfire. Bobby, if there was a fire here, how would you be notified?
Well, there really is fire. I could...
Well, that's you, Faith, Mr. Drew. That's amazing. Let's ask Aiden if this could work for our friends in Spain. Aiden?
No, that's not going to work. Andrew, do you think you could use that here in Spain?
See, that sounds very good. It's a great idea. We can help each other protect our precious forests, not just here in Spain, but all around the world.
Thanks, Andrew. Back to you, Faith.
Thanks, Aiden. Okay, let's go back to Placer County one more time and see a forest guard works there. Drew?
I think Bobby's coming back from that fire. Well, thanks to Forester, we know it's an outfire, and put it out fast.
Well, that's good for you, us, the rest of our community, and the world. Well, back to you, Faith. Thanks, Drew. Well, Mr. Vega, could you tell me how Forest Guard gets started?
Sure. Actually, an FLO team called the LEGO Guards came up with this idea, and here's some of their original research.
Thank you for joining us today, Mr. Vega. We're the LEGO Guards from Meadow Vista, California, and this is our research, which we have done throughout the year.
Last year, fighting fires cost our county nearly $300 million, with damage costing over $250 million.
Installing a Forest Guard pilot system into Tahoe National Forest with cameras marked with these red dots would only cost about $296,000 and potentially save our county millions of dollars.
Here's some places we're going to work for research. When we went to the Western Regional Climate Center, they gave us a graph of California if it's hotter than dry. We went to help fire, they said the same thing. And then, I mean, the Tahoe National Forest, they gave us this map, which marked red dots where it came from.
And these are global connections, the GFMC, which is the United Nations, and they have an idea which is interesting, and the Parthenol Colosseum, we're thinking of having that there in global connections, but they didn't respond to any of that.
Well, shame on them.
We're glad you're researching, and here's where the question writer presents our presentation. And if you go to YouTube, you can search up, they actually have a presentation. Here we have resources, and this is our website, where you can find more about the research.
We believe that Forest Guard would be an easy and inexpensive solution for both our communities and the rest of the world's threatened forests.
Thank you for watching our presentation. We'll take any questions and comments you have.
Does the board have any questions, Jennifer?
I don't have any questions. I'm going to go check out your website and follow up on some of this information. I am just so impressed by the amount of work and effort that you've obviously put into this, and I give you full marks. Science was not my field at your age, but this is just phenomenal. I hope that you got younger folks coming up after you who are following in your footsteps to keep going with this sort of research, and I think this would just be a phenomenal, phenomenal project for us to bring to Placer County. So please let us know if there's anything we can do on the county level to help move this project forward. That would be great. And just again, congratulations to all of you. You've done just marvelous work.
Anybody else have any comments?
Congratulations, impressive. Great job.
I would just add that it's very wonderful to see young people like you use your minds and your creativity to develop something like this, but I'd also like to commend the parents and the teachers that work with these children to be able to do this. And these are, I think, an example of what Placer County can produce if we continue to work together, but I want to commend you, young people. This is absolutely phenomenal work, and obviously Sony must have thought so too. So congratulations. You know, they might have a career in acting, too. Thank you for taking your time to work with these kids. Are we, we can't start? Let's do, see if we can do a departmental item. How about on number seven, procurement? Mr. Bogdan?
That's a tough act to follow.
Yeah.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Board. Item 7A is requesting your board's approval to award competitive bid number 9899 to Hunter Sons for the county's bulk gasoline and diesel fuel purchases and deliveries. Price is determined by the average Sacramento price, as reported by the Oil Price Information Service, plus the contractor's margin, which ranges from minus three cents a gallon for gas to about a third of a cent for diesel. These margins are about two cents better than they were last year. Today's price in Auburn, including tax and fees, would be $233 for regular unleaded gasoline and $205 for diesel. Staff recommends your board's approval to award bid 9899 for the county's bulk fuel purchases over the next fiscal year in the maximum aggregate amount of $2,145,000.
Board have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Why don't we go ahead and do B, too?
All right. Item 7B is requesting your approval of a one-year renewal of our sole source support agreement for maintenance of the county's property tax system with Megabyte Systems of Rockland. This software application, database, and server operating system are shared by the auditor, assessor, and tax collector to manage property taxes, billings, and payments. Since Megabyte is the only vendor authorized to support this system and has agreed to renew at the same price as last year, staff recommends your board approval to renew for the coming year in the amount of $339,637.32.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's 9:30. We're right on time. Item number two, the Granite Bay Parks and Trails. Mr. Durfee, good morning. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Jim Durfee, Director of Facility Services. I'm here this morning with a recommendation that you conduct a public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution approving the engineer's report confirming diagram and assessment, and then ordering the levy of the assessment for fiscal year 2009-10 for the Granite Bay Parks, Trails, and Open Space Assessment District. Uh, as your board is aware, the Assessment District, uh, provides for the parks and recreation facilities in the Granite Bay area. It's a voter-approved assessment district. Uh, we've been to your board two times previously, um, this year with, uh, approval of the engineer's report and then a, a, a resolution of intention to set up this particular public hearing. In preparing this item, uh, it was brought to our attention by our consultant that there was actually an error in the original, um, engineer's report. And I've got some corrected numbers. The, the bad news was that there was an error. The good news was that the error was in favor of the, um, uh, residents of the Assessment District, and the numbers are actually less expensive than what we had predicted. The colo will be less than what was predicted. Uh, the engineer's report has been corrected, uh, and submitted in its correct form for your adoption today, and the, the assessments we'll be, um, recommending are as follows. The current, uh, assessment for fiscal, for this particular fiscal year is $65.86 per benefit unit, uh, per year. The, um, 2009-10 increase will be, actually be $0.68 rather than the dollar and 80 cents that was posted in the original, uh, posting. Uh, that will leave a total assessment amount of $66.54 per benefit unit. Uh, that does have a slight, about an $8,000 impact on the revenues that were anticipated, but those revenues were anticipated in error, so, uh, we will certainly live within those means. I'm here to answer any questions you might have, but I would re, uh, recommend that you conduct a public hearing and, uh, adopt this, uh, the recommended increase. And again, uh, for the record, the engineer's report, uh, on file has been corrected, uh, to indicate these corrected numbers.
For that, excuse me, the board have any questions? I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody wishing to make a comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring you back to the board.
Chairman, a move approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. And by the way, we got that, I got the email last night. Thank you. So, now we will go back to number eight. Holly. Good morning.
Grab those glasses so I can see, see you all. Better to see you all with my... Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Happy birthday Supervisor Yagant. I did hear you all singing, and maybe less would be in order.
If I got so embarrassed, would, would you like to sing for yourself?
Well, I could. In any case, the item I am presenting today is a resolution authorizing the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors to execute an agreement with the City of Lincoln, Lincoln, with respect to a tax-sharing agreement on the project known as Lincoln 270. Lincoln 270 is located within the Sunset Industrial area immediately west of Highway 65. It has been the subject of much discussion over the last, I'm going to say five to six years, but it may have extended beyond that formally in, since 2005. The Lincoln 270 project represents a key area for economic development within the City of Lincoln, and certainly as economic development occurs within the City of Lincoln, there are distinct benefits for the county as well. The future non-residential development is estimated at about 2.3, 2 point, let me just say, 2 million-plus square feet, um, which includes, um, general commercial, business, professional, uh, medical campus, light industrial, as well as 102 acres of open space. This application was submitted, as I mentioned, in 2005. As you may know, that prior to consideration by Lafco, the City of Lincoln and the county must agree on apportionment of revenues that would be generated following annexation. With this particular annexation, the county currently receives 31.14% of the 1% property tax. Currently, that's about $5,300 post-ERAF. This amount represents what would be, um, shared between the county and the City of Lincoln when you include the fire control and library as well. This is about one-third less on average than we receive in terms of proportionate share in other areas of the county. So, that speaks to the challenges of, um, coming to agreement on this particular issue. Nonetheless, the county and the city have agreed on the apportionment of revenues, which, which is a good thing. The county and the city have agreed that the county would retain 78% of that amount following annexation, and the city would receive 22%. That is pre-ERAF, prior to shifts that would go to the revenue, Education Revenue Augmentation Fund. We believe at build-out, this would represent a break-even situation, um, for the county that would allow us to continue to deliver countywide services such as, um, criminal justice services, um, finance services, assessor, tax collector, and other health and human services that we, um, utilize our property taxes for. The City of Lincoln would receive all sales taxes, would receive all transient occupancy taxes, as well as 22% of the property tax, again, pre-ERAF. We believe that this is a reasonable agreement, and we would recommend your approval. Prior to doing so, I would mention a couple other things that are in addition to, um, the property tax sharing. As we do with each of our agreements, we do request that the cities include collection of a capital facility fee, capital facilities fee, that, um, funds our countywide capital facilities as growth occurs, mitigates the impacts of new development on growth of our, for our facilities. In addition, um, the City of Lincoln has included what we're calling a Tier Two Regional Traffic Fee. It is not in this agreement, but as new development occurs, each of the cities is requested to, to, um, pursue adoption of that particular fee, and indeed, the city has and has included it in a separate development agreement. Um, with that, we would request your approval of the resolution. I would like to make one modification. Because there has not been, um, updated information yet received from the Auditor's Office that may require some technical corrections to the agreement, once that information is received, we would ask that you also authorize the County Executive Officer and the Chairman of our Board of Supervisors to make any technical, non-material adjustments that may be required with the updated information from Lafco. So, with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Robert?
Don't have a question. I just want to thank our staff, County Execs Office, um, and staff City of Lincoln, the City Council. Uh, in this post-proposition 13 era that we live in in local government, mapping that on to the woes of the state budget, it's amazing that, uh, we can argue amongst ourselves down to splitting essentially 80% of the property tax coming to the county in this case, and 20% going to the City of Lincoln, and still, our budgets are solid and healthy. Um, and we have these anomalies that exist in Prop 13 that make it really difficult to make all that work where a particular piece of property might have a significant property tax base that comes to local government, and another piece of property, uh, just because of circumstances, would have virtually no monies available. So, um, we're going to see those challenges, uh, continue to play out as, as we have to deal with these issues with our cities. So, I just want to thank everybody for their respective efforts in this case, and I think for the City of Lincoln and for the county, we've done something that is fiscally healthy for our constituents, and we've figured out how to make it work under intense burdens. But it's not easy.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anybody in the public want to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring you back to the board.
Move staff, move, staff recommendation as related to the resolution including the modifications that Holly just articulated.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Holly. You always cheer up my morning when I see you. I always feel better.
Good thing I didn't sing.
Well, yeah. You're like me. I sing solo, solo, no one can hear me. Item number nine. Mr. Durfee and Mr. Dickinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Holly cheers up a lot of our afternoons, budget meetings.
She giveth and she taketh.
And on that note, um, appreciate being here this morning. Again, Jim Durfee with Facility Services. I have Will Dickinson, Deputy Director of Facility Services, with me. Um, we're here today with a, a recommendation that we, that your board, uh, consider approval of a budget revision authorizing $425,000 in contributions from the fiscal 89 General Fund Community and Agency Support Appropriation, um, to CSA 28 Zone 6, which is the Sheridan Sewer Water and Lighting CSA, and that you approve expenditures between July 1st, 2009, and the adoption of the fiscal 910 final budget, um, so that we can be spending those monies between now and the time of adoption of that budget. Uh, as you're aware, CSA 28 Zone 6 provides the community of Sheridan with sewage collection and treatment, uh, domestic water services, and streetlight services for approximately 200 connections in that area, about 200, uh, single-family homes and a couple of businesses. Uh, the district has been financially challenged for a number of years. Uh, your board is acutely aware of the difficulties of providing these services, uh, on a, on a small community basis. And over, uh, over the years, you have been very supportive of, uh, these districts. Of the $425,000 that we're requesting for Sheridan, uh, we would propose to spend it in about three different ways. $150,000 of that money would be transferred to the spray irrigation capital project budget. Uh, this will help us to leverage about $2 million worth of grant funds, uh, for the community, so it's a, it's a very good payback on the investment, uh, and will help us to, um, bring to completion a series of projects that, uh, will vastly improve, uh, both the, um, uh, the level of treatment service that we're able to provide and, and our ability to, um, to dispose of that water after it's treated, uh, but also, uh, ultimately provide some additional connections for the community, uh, to provide, uh, for growth within the community plan area itself. Not, not new growth, but growth that's been on hold because of the lack of sewer services in the area. Uh, we also will be planning to spend $125,000, uh, on a water project, uh, again, leveraging grant funds. Um, ultimately, uh, we anticipate receiving about $200,000 in grants from the Department of Agriculture for the water system. The balance, uh, which would be $150,000 out of the, uh, $425,000 total, would remain in the, in the Sheridan Sewer Water and Lighting CSA to help cover operating cost shortfalls. Uh, as your board is aware, over the years, we've been, uh, running at a deficit in terms of operations. The community, uh, recently helped to support, uh, significant fee increases, uh, that puts them on a track to be self-sufficient from an operation standpoint over the next three years. Uh, these recommendations are consistent with recommendations from the, um, Sewer Infrastructure Committee that your board, uh, requested a couple of years ago, and they're also consistent with the actions that you've taken, uh, over the, the past several months, uh, relative to, um, putting together the rate packages that we, that I, uh, previously spoke of. Uh, with that, we're here to answer any questions that you may have, but would recommend your approval of our recommendations.
Any questions? Anybody in the audience have a question on this item? I'll bring you back to the board. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Let's do B.
Uh, this item is, again, follow-up on previous discussions and actions that we've, uh, had with your board over the last, uh, about 18 months, considering various sewer issues in these small districts. We have very specific recommendations, uh, concerning, uh, Sewer Maintenance District Number Three, CSA 28 Zone Six, again, which is Sheridan, and then CSA 28 Zone 24 Applegate. Uh, our recommendations are that you forgive existing debt totaling $1.37 million owed by CSA 28, which is Sheridan, that you forgive existing debt totaling, uh, uh, $1,348,000, which is owed by CSA 28 Zone 20, uh, Zone 24 Applegate, uh, and that you forgive existing debt totaling $1,065,000 owed by Sewer Maintenance District Number Three. Um, I think that the, uh, the issues in these districts has been well chronicled over a series of board hearings over the past two years, uh, through, um, updates last summer, and then our budget hearings, and then, uh, through the, the budget and rate hearings that we held about a month ago. Uh, your board is aware that these districts, uh, again, have been, uh, uh, very challenged fiscally over the last number of years. Your board has supported those operations through loans from the CSA Revolving Fund. Uh, as part of our, uh, rate increases that we just undertook, uh, we put these districts on the road to, uh, operational self-sufficiency, uh, over the upcoming three years, uh, with the intention that, that these contributions, uh, would, um, would no longer be needed for operations. There still are significant capital problems, uh, at least in the Applegate and SMD Number Three District, uh, that we're working on, uh, both legislatively and, and internally in order to fund those capital improvements. But relief from the liability for these debts will help, uh, on an operational basis because we'll, we will cease to accrue interest liability, uh, and it, and it puts us in a better position to qualify for, both for grants, uh, and for CSA Revolving Fund. All of the agencies that look at these grants and, and loans, uh, look at the liabilities that the districts have, and having these additional liabilities makes it difficult for us to go out and get other sources of funding for the capital improvements. Uh, we're certainly here, uh, to answer any questions that your board may have, uh, and appreciate your consideration of the request.
Board have any questions? Anyone in the audience? I'll bring you back to the board.
Move staff recommendation.
Roll call. I couldn't read the first one. I should have done.
Yagant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Bueller?
Montgomery?
Yes.
I didn't vote. Yes. I vote yes.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
We got the full court press this morning, huh?
It's all good news today. Morning, Board and Chair. Dr. Richard Burden, the Director and Health Officer for Health and Human Services. Um, I'd like to provide some introductory comments for items that we'll be presenting this morning, and then also I'll do the last item, uh, that was originally scheduled for Graham Canous. Uh, we have about 145 contracts that we brought forward today, both in these items and the consent items that we've already presented and were approved. They represent about half of the contracts that our department has with local nonprofits, small businesses, and other governmental agencies. We found over the past number of years, by using contracts, we're able to access the most, uh, cost-effective manner to get the expertise that we need to provide the services that we need for the residents that we serve here in Placer County. Through the use just of the contracts that we're discussing this morning, over 55,000 Placer County residents will benefit in the next fiscal year as a result of the contracts that we're presenting. Uh, we found in each one of these contracts that we've been able to incorporate language that allows us to adjust the contracts if state or federal funding, um, it changes. Uh, we have 30-day no, no cause, um, language in each one of the contracts so that the department, uh, can make adjustments mid-year, and we've consistently done that in the past number of years. Just as an example of one of the contracts that we'll be talking about and the importance of them, uh, it'll be the last one that I'll wrap up with, but with our Cal-Win project and the data system. In the last year, the fiscal climate has resulted in almost a 50% increase in individuals coming and seeking application for, um, assistance with Medi-Cal, health insurance, food stamps, and other, uh, uh, grant aid, uh, that's currently based under CalWorks. So, these are crucial, um, contracts. All of them are very flexible and can meet the needs of the county as a first and foremost priority, and we can adjust them mid-year. Um, so with that, I'd like to turn it over. I think Maureen's first in presenting the contracts, and Richard, and then I'll wrap up.
Good morning. Maureen Bauman with the Adult System of Care. Uh, the first contract is actually an umbrella contract which consolidates two contracts that you've approved in prior years. It's for Doctors Chima and Kungura. We're asking for a... We're asking for approval of the umbrella contract, so that we actually have flexibility and don't have to, as we use the two doctors. These doctors specifically provide us the mandated health and physicals for folks that are in our inpatient unit. Just a reminder, we probably interview about 2,000 folks per year for 51/50 assessments. We hospitalized about 50% of those folks in our county PUF and in other private hospitals. These are the doctors that actually provide the histories of physicals for those folks on the PUF. The funding in terms of general fund is $63,000, federal and state funding is $77,000. This is a two-year contract for these two doctors, so be happy to answer any questions and recommend approval.
Any questions? Got a motion to have? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you. B.
Good morning, Richard Connect Children's System of Care. Under your leadership in the past two years, Children's System of Care has effectively reduced the need for out-of-home residential services by nearly 20%, resulting in a significant reduced need for this service level. This item before you provides the mandated residential and mental health services to those individuals who suffer from profound impairments, who eventually do require this mandated out-of-home service when necessary. These services are the most efficient and effective method to quickly return clients to their communities and minimize the use of local dollars. The total cost will not exceed $1.3 million, and the county contribution is $249,000. Be happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Have a motion? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Item 10C is a request to continue the longstanding partnership with the local mental health professionals in our community who collaboratively and inexpensively deliver mandated outpatient therapy, counseling, and crisis services to Placer children and adults. In part due to this model, the rate of hospitalization and inpatient care for children has been significantly reduced. Total cost will not exceed $900,000, which is a $100,000 reduction from current year funding, and the required match is $205,000, and we'd value your support for this umbrella contract as well.
Any questions? Have a motion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you. D.
Item 10D is another effective tool which we've employed in Placer County to meet federal and state mandates for crisis stabilization for seriously impaired young people. Eastfield Ming Kwong Families First, a highly regarded statewide pioneer of these services, is our partner, delivering these services effectively to up to 50 of Placer's most needy children. This allows a direct avoidance of the trauma and, of course, the costs associated with institutional care. These services are funded by multiple state sources. A $59,000 Placer investment allows CSOC to leverage an additional $210,000 in state mental health monies. This year, the state has increased our non-matching allocation of mental health dollars, and we recommend its use here, which accounts for the increase in this contract. This will effectively help us to reduce the need for far more expensive inpatient and group home services going forward. Be happy to take any questions on this contract as well.
Any questions? Motion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item E is the computer system that on a monthly basis determines eligibility and accountability for over 2,500 applications on, uh, Placer County residents that are in need of general assistance, cash assistance from state CalWorks program, employment assistance, food stamps, Medi-Cal, health insurance, and other programs as they're determined eligible. As a result of the computer program being approved in 1999, we've been in a consortium agreement with other counties, and is currently, the contract is with Electronic Data Systems. It results in 13,000 residents a month being able to receive the benefits that they're eligible for, and also have the accountability and avoid any fraudulent use of any of the state or government benefits. This contract is an example of where we're able to, through the expenditure of $165,000 of County General Fund over three years, leverage over $3,300,000 of state and federal dollars to assure that the computer system is in place day in and day out. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, would recommend approval of the contract.
Any, no questions? I have a motion. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Is probation here? Morning.
The board approved a contract with Coineania Foster Home to provide comprehensive services to at-risk minors and their families under the J.J.C.P.A. Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act of 2000. In May of 2009, the board approved Comprehensive Multi-Agency Juvenile Justice Plan Modification, and under this plan, the probation department is to maintain services to at-risk minors and their families at Coineania through the Crisis Resolution Center. Based on Coineania's excellent service to date, the probation department is requesting a third contract renewing from July 1st, 2009, to June 30th, 2010. Coineania has agreed to continue the services conducted previously. The contract renewal viewing amount of $550,000 and will be funded through J.J.C.P.A. and will not impact County General Fund monies. Asking that the board approve this.
It is Karen Lund, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Representing Steve Picourt today?
Yes.
He, he didn't practice well enough, so you took over.
That's my job.
I have a motion. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Should we do redevelopment? I like that.
Good morning. Jim Laboo.
Oh, excuse me, I gotta make an announcement. I can't read this morning, so, good thing Tony's prodding me here. We're going to adjourn as the Placer County Board of Supervisors and reconvene as the Placer County Redevelopment Agency.
Thank you. Good morning, Jim Laboo, Redevelopment Agency. The item before you is a proposed amendment to an existing predevelopment loan agreement with BB LLC, a development team proposing the Kings Beach Town Center Mixed Use Project. Approximately, almost exactly one year ago, your board approved the predevelopment loan agreement for $500,000 to assist the design, environmental review, and fees, costs for preparing plans and obtaining permits for development of a comprehensive mixed-use project, about three and a half acres, proposed in mixed use, in Kings Beach. This project is received, has received Community Enhancement Program designation from TRPA, is moving forward, and is looked at as a significant stimulus to the overall economic revitalization of the Kings Beach area. What is proposed with this amendment is to, I will, I will say, rather than the, the changes, what is, what will remain the same is the project, the amount of the loan will stay the same, the scope of work of the project will stay the same. It's required that the funds be used only for very specific costs, for design, engineering fees, architect fees, fees for TRPA and the county environmental impact report and so forth. None of that will change. The loan is secured by real property, and we, and they are required to provide detailed documentation to show that the, the funds are used correctly before we disburse funds to them. The change would be that rather than it being entirely on a reimbursement basis, that we now, once we receive all the proper documentation to show that the funds are, have been used or the costs incurred for the specific uses approved in the agreement, that we could then disburse those funds directly as direct payments. The rest of the agreement would remain the same. That concludes the report.
Any questions? Jennifer?
Jim, just so I'm totally clear on this. The terms, the amount of the loan won't change?
Correct.
The uses will not change? This is merely, instead of making the developer pay and then us reimbursing him, we're essentially taking that piece out of it and making the payment directly through the redevelopment agency, is that correct?
Correct, so that the, the payments could occur a little bit quicker, the developer would not have to go out and borrow money and incur financing costs and then get reimbursed from us. So it just saves a little bit of cash flow and, and costs from the, to the developer.
Great, thank you very much.
Want to make a motion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Now we'll go back to our... Oh, we will now adjourn as the Redevelopment Agency and reconvene as the Placer County Board of Supervisors, and we'll take up the 10 a.m. You guys are right on time.
You are running a good meeting today, as usual, sir. Just a couple of quick comments before I start officially. I'd like the board and Supervisor Wiegand to know that your rendition of "Happy Birthday" was uploaded to YouTube one hour ago. It has already received more hits in that same first hour than Susan Boyle's recent song, and Simon Cowell's record label has already called, made inquiries. I think they wanted you for the dance contest. So, Chairman Rockhold, members of the board, today I'm requesting your approval for a resolution authorizing the County Executive Office to execute a cooperative agreement with the cities of Rockland and Lincoln to authorize a joint application to the California Department of Housing and Community Development for a grant of more than $2 million in neighborhood stabilization funding. These funds are part of the federal stimulus package and are provided to local jurisdictions to establish financing approaches to assist low and moderate income households purchase and upgrade foreclosed homes. These funds, once received by the local jurisdictions, will be used in coordination with the existing first-time homebuyer programs, but will be specifically targeted at foreclosed bank-owned homes. The federal stimulus dollars are flowing through the Community Development Block Grant Program. According to those rules, jurisdictions that are slated to receive more than $1 million, such as the city of Roseville, will receive a direct allocation. However, jurisdictions that are scheduled to receive less than $1 million each are required to file a joint application. Placer County staff has taken the lead with the cities of Lincoln and Rockland to prepare the application and will serve as a grant administrator. The county will receive approximately $830,000, the city of Lincoln will receive $668,000, and the city of Rockland will receive $506,000. The city council in these jurisdictions are also taking actions similar to the one you're taking today to approve the joint application. There are a variety of approaches available to the jurisdictions to implement the program, and each jurisdiction will maintain the responsibility and control to implement it as best fits its local circumstances within the federal guidelines. In Placer County, our potential target areas for the program include North Auburn, Bowman, Forest Hill, Sheridan, Kings Beach, and Tahoe Vista. I would like to commend Jim Laboo, Joanne Arbok, and the Redevelopment Agency housing staff for their leadership role in working with the cities of Lincoln and Rockland to prepare this joint application, which will result in more than $2 million in benefits for Placer County residents and neighborhoods.
Oh, you, I was waiting for you to finish. Any questions? Tim?
I just wanted to clarify, the, I see these funds come from the Housing and Economic Recovery Act of 2008, and that was through the prior administration, the Bush administration, is that correct? I just want to clarify that for the record.
The record behind me says yes. That would be Joanne Arbok, our housing coordinator.
Thank you. Any other questions? Have a motion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now going to adjourn to closed session.
The board will go into closed session and take up the items on page five of its agenda, which includes discussions of real property negotiations and labor discussion. There will be no litigation discussed today.
And the board is supposed to come back at 10:30 for the next items.
Okay. That's supposed to. Will we go?
Okay, I'll reconvene the meeting and Tony's gonna report out on our closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board has returned from closed session. It took up the items on page five. Item thirteen, with regards to the first item, it met with its real property negotiator and gave direction. With regards to conference with labor negotiator, the board met with its labor negotiators with regards to DSA. And that closes this report.
Thank you, Tony. Our next item is item number four, our ten thirty item, Maureen Baumann. Good morning again.
Still Maureen Baumann. I would like to acknowledge Supervisor Holmes, who sits as the chairman of the commission, which is the item that we have before you, the Placer County Community Action Plan for the Community Services Commission. And also in the audience is Chairman Don Kleinfelder, and our county staff support, who is a supervisor, Cindy Bigby. So just wanted to acknowledge all their good work for this process.
Who's the young lady out there as well?
Oh, she's an involuntary assistant. Oh. And what's her name?
Sophia.
Hi, Sophia.
So we have before the board this morning a request for a couple of actions. One is to conduct a public hearing to consider the Placer County Community Action Plan for calendar years two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven, to sign the certification of community action plan and assurances, which is a requirement for us to submit this grant to the state, and to approve a resolution authorizing the Director of Health and Human Services to apply for and enter into a contract with the California Department of Community Services and Development to receive funds under the calendar year two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven for the Community Services Plot Grant Program. We expect about two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for this upcoming year for this commission. These funds are directed towards folks of very low income. Just to note, in the last year, we've served over seven thousand individuals with these funds. The commission does an RFP and lets out the funds through the process after they do a prioritization, usually to community-based organizations. The county keeps a small portion of those funds to help to provide the staff support to the commission. Just to note, we have two processes with the Community Services Commission. So in April, you gave us some direction, and we're gonna be coming back next month, on the stimulus package which the commission is eligible for. This that I'm bringing this morning is just the regular Community Services Commission allocation from the state of California. So I would recommend approval of our recommendations and be happy to answer any questions.
Jim?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to let you know that I've served on the Community Services Commission ever since I've been in the seat. And there's two priorities that we have. Number one is to make sure that those funds are spread throughout the county, for example, the Lincoln Lighthouse, Tahoe Women's Center. And then another priority is directing those funds to the organizations that can best provide those services. So Salvation Army certainly is one on the top of our list, and the Gathering Inn as well. So we try to make sure that all the, the whole county is represented and dispersal of those funds. So with that, I will make a motion to approve.
I will open it up to the public. Anybody in the public wish to comment on this item? I'll close the public hearing, and Jim has made a motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your next item is a series of traffic fee adjustments. They are notice public hearings set for ten forty-five, and I don't think we can commence until ten forty-five, so we'll take a recess.
We will recess again until ten forty-five. Thank you.
Can get our exercise.
It feels good to stand.
We're back in session. And we will take up item number five. And Mr. Gaber, good morning.
The item before you this morning is the first of three, and this one is dealing with the update to the Forest Hill Capital Improvement Plan and traffic fee. As you're all aware, that the community plan for Forest Hill was recently completed, and as part of that was a traffic analysis to look at the impacts of the growth on local The analysis looked at all the local roads and determined that basically all of them operated at acceptable levels of service except for Forest Hill. And then also, the analysis looked at the impacts in Forest Hill and decided what improvements were necessary, what funding sources were necessary, and how the improvements should be completed. So the CIP that you see before you identifies basically only improvements to Forest Hill Road, which are determined to be necessary. Also for the Forest Hills, the community plan area, we are proposing two separate fees, one for residential and one for non-residential. And as we went through the traffic analysis, it was determined that while they both generated a certain number of trips, that the residential trips were having more of an impact on the roads where they needed improvement. So that's why we're proposing two different fees. The traffic analysis improvements and proposed CIP and fees were discussed with the Forest Hill Community Forum and the community, and they have agreed with the proposals in front of you today. Therefore, we ask that the board conduct a public hearing for the capital improvement plan and the fee, approve the nexus analysis for the Forest Hill Traffic Improvement Impact Fee District, and adopt an ordinance modifying the capital improvement plan and corresponding traffic mitigation fee for the Forest Hill Traffic Impact Fee District. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Board have any questions? Jennifer.
I wanted to verify this $4,425 residential fee. That is still below the county, average countywide fee. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
The countywide fee is about $4,900?
I had that number.
My fellow supervisor tells me I'm correct.
Yes, yes. It's in the staff report. $4,944 is the average fee for the districts.
Great. My only concern with this is 21% is a fairly substantial jump, and I wondered about the possibility of phasing this in over two years.
I would have to defer to council to see, we've not done that before. I'm not certain how that would be.
It's doable. It's not doable today because we would rewrite the paperwork to make it happen. But if that was the choice of the board of supervisors, from a legal point of view, it's doable. We would probably re-notice the hearing and delay the implementation of the hearing and appropriate fee structure. Ordinances and, I think the ordinance would probably be the only issue you would have to change. The real question is whether it's functional and businesslike, and I would defer to Public Works on that question.
And if I, I could just clarify. I mean, on one hand, I'm concerned about this large increase. On the other hand, there has been so little new residential construction in the Forest Hill area. I believe one residential permit has been pulled in the last year that, quite honestly, it won't have much been impacted. So I'm, while I'm concerned about the 21% increase in one fell swoop, I'm willing to forego rewriting the ordinance, having another public hearing. Thank you.
If I might add to that, the growth rate is less than 2% up in Forest Hill. And also, I think Andrew covered this, is that this is a result of the transportation network needed to support the community plan that was recently adopted. So this in effect is a mitigation measure and then the ability to build a road network. So it really ties in more philosophically to growth supporting its own transportation needs.
Okay. It is a public hearing, so I will open up the public hearing for anybody in the public wishing to comment on this item. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item number B.
B, which is basically the same thing for the Granite Bay area. There, we updated the circulation element of the Granite Bay Community Plan in 2005 and '06. And during that period, we went through the extensive list of potential improvements that could be made to local roads. We went through that with the community and with the MAC to determine which improvements should be included in the CIP. The MAC and the community felt that they would rather live with lower levels of service than some of the proposed improvements. Some of the improvements that they weren't interested in looking at were additional signants on Douglas or in Auburn Folsom, or widening of certain roads such as Auburn Folsom to four lanes. And the proposed CIP that you see in front of you today is a result of those meetings. The proposed CIP also reflects the era money for Auburn Folsom, and without which the fee would be approximately $7,900. So there's a substantial saving by approving this at this time. And also, adoption of the CIP will complete the funding package for the next phase of Auburn Folsom widening. Again, ask the board to conduct the public hearing, approve the nexus analysis for the fee, and adopt an ordinance modifying the CIP and the corresponding traffic mitigation fee. And again, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Kirk.
Not a question, just a quick clarification. You had made the comment that the community feedback was not reflective of an interest in widening Auburn Folsom to four lanes. I think we need to clarify that that's north of Douglas.
Correct.
Yeah, the south of Douglas to the county line is well underway.
Yes.
And we're certainly supportive of that.
That is, south of Douglas is our highest party. Correct.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the audience wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
To adopt the engineer's report and approve the fee increase.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item number C.
And the fun one. Okay, this is the overall increase to the traffic mitigation fees. And the fee ordinance, as written, includes a provision that the fee should be increased annually to reflect the increases in construction costs. And the standard in this area has been to use the cost index prepared by E N R, Engineering News Record, which is a magazine, and which reflects increases both nationally and locally. It's also used by several of the other local fee districts such as the Sparta, Highway 65, City County Fee and Roseville Fees, all use the same index. The cost index reflects changes in costs of materials such as steel, wood, and concrete, and labor, but it does not reflect the changes in contractors' markups or margins. And so therefore, what you've seen in the past few years due to the pace of development is that while we've had single-digit increases, 3% to 4% for the cost of materials and labor going up, the margins have increased substantially higher than that. And so our construction costs have gone up in double digits. Now we are seeing that we're receiving multiple bids and prices that are flat or dropping, but what we're seeing and hearing from the contractors is simply trying to keep working and that they are not, their prices are not reflecting what we're actually seeing in the materials costs. So therefore, the E N R, or Construction Index, shows that we should be seeking an increase of 5.1%, but what we felt is that probably was more representative, is an increase of 2.5%. Some of the things to realize with this increase in our CIP is this is that we work on a 20-year capital improvement program. So while we are looking at costs today and a small cost increase now, we're looking at costs that we're factoring in over 20 years. Past few years, second thing is past few years, again, we were only seeing 3% to 4% increases for the E N R index, whereas our costs were going up 10% to 15%. And while our costs have dropped some, they've not dropped, we're not seeing all of that being recovered right now. Building permit costs also increased earlier this year in a similar amount, and also, you know, up to your discussion, but is that you have the ability to say, you know, to take the points, if you would prefer that we have a different increase. We feel that the 2.5% is supported by what we're seeing and with the increases in this long-term CIP. With that, we ask that you conduct a public hearing and to adopt a resolution increasing the fees to 2.5%. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Board have any questions? Seeing none, I will open up the public hearing and for anybody in the audience wishing to comment on this item. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Good job. You? We have about four minutes. So do you want to adjourn for a few minutes? Okay, we're going to adjourn for four minutes and we'll be back. Eleven o'clock item. Item number six, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Boyle. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Mike Boyle, County Executive Office. Good morning, board members. The item before you today is one that's rather unusual insofar as you are here today considering this item at the request of the Nevada Irrigation District. And I'd like to introduce the chairman, if you'll allow me, of that district, Mr. John Drew, sitting beside me today, to help answer any questions your board may have with regard to this matter. By way of background, NID is a multi-county special district, and your board recently honored a retiring member of their board of directors, Mr. Paul Williams. Mr. Paul Williams retired after a fairly distinguished career, including that at NID. That retirement obviously created a vacancy in what is known as Division Four of NID. Division Four of NID is wholly within the confines of Placer County. Most particularly, it's within District Two, a little bit of District Three, and perhaps even a small piece of District Five. Your office was contacted by Mr. Drew's staff last week and asked if we would agendize an item for today. The reason of today was important insofar as NID meets again tomorrow. So any action that your board chooses to take today or not will be part of their discussion tomorrow. The issue, of course, is the appointment of a replacement for the retired Mr. Williams. Current law allows NID 60 days to either appoint an individual to fill the unexpired term, which goes to December of 2010. NID Board attempted to make that appointment at its last meeting and was unable to. From a field of quite well-qualified candidates, they settled on two candidates in particular. After two votes, the four members of NID were deadlocked. Hence, Mr. Drew, given that your board has a great interest in the representation of NID, particularly because it's Placer County, has sought out your assistance if you choose to give it in terms of providing some feedback to the NID Board in order to help them break the current deadlock. Importantly, should NID not either make an appointment or call for a special election by June 21st, it is my understanding that the 60 days will expire where formal jurisdiction for the appointment or calling a special election will fall to your board, June 21st. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back to you and/or Mr. Drew if you'd like him to make any comments.
I guess I would look to Robert if he had any suggestions on our questions of kind of a strategy, what we should and shouldn't do.
Thanks, Rocky. Yeah, I don't know if all of this NID jurisdiction is in my district, but the vast majority of it is for sure, so appreciate that. But I guess I think I have some questions, Mr. Drew, and/or maybe you would prefer just making a presentation to the board, and that might answer some of our questions first.
That's fine.
Well, I'll attempt to keep it brief. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, and members of the audience, first let me begin by thanking your staff for the excellent communication that we've had with them and taking care of some of the logistical concerns in bringing this matter before you. As Mr. Boyle indicated, we were able to interview five excellent candidates. The board settled on two, and as Mr. Boyle indicated, after two votes, we were unable to reach a decision, a majority decision. It was suggested by our general manager that we seek your opinion in this matter to see if it would allow us to make a majority decision. I'm here solely today to assist you in any way that I can, to answer any questions that I can, and just be at your service.
Thanks. One question that I've heard and also I share is, under the laws, I understand that there are two legal options available to the NID Board. One is to have the special election, the other is to ask the Placer County Board of Supervisors, or I guess by default, if you did nothing, we would then actually make the appointment. So you're asking, the NID Board is asking for a letter of recommendation essentially from us, and the question is, why and with what are you going to do with that letter if we decide to present it?
Well, I don't know for sure. Hopefully, should you be able to make a decision or a recommendation, it will carry sufficient weight so as to influence the vote of the board one direction or the other. As Mr. Boyle indicated, we have two options remaining for our board. One is to select a candidate or call for a special election. Should we be unable to do that, then it falls to the Placer County Board of Supervisors to make that decision. It falls in your jurisdiction at that point. The two candidates that we selected as finalists are both excellent, fine folks, as are the other three candidates. There just really isn't anything else that I can say other than, you know, it's a very difficult decision. You get to a point in life where you think you've seen everything, and sure enough, something new pops up. So I would rather be home farming than be here, but I'm sure glad and honored to be here before you. The political process is one issue, the democratic process is another issue. If we are unable to make a decision based on any of your recommendation, I am going to be in favor of holding a special election. I realize that's a significant cost to the district and the voters in that division. However, it ensures that the democratic process is fulfilled and the voice of the people is heard.
Jim.
I just have a question about the procedure. Does the, does it have to be a unanimous vote? Does anybody know whether it has to be unanimous vote? No, just a majority?
Just a majority.
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
I just was gonna, I was gonna make one comment. I found it ironic that three of the five candidates all lived on Garden Bar Road. So they must all know each other pretty well.
We've had that discussion.
Jennifer.
Yeah, I also had a couple of procedural questions. The letter you sent us was, you were asking us to choose between the two candidates that you had identified, but were we to interview or listen to candidates' presentations today? I'm assuming we can listen to all five.
That's correct. In discussions with Mr. Boyle, that was one of the points that he brought up. So you are not limited to the two candidates, but in fact, the full field, as I understand it. I don't know that all five candidates are here today, but I know that at least the majority of them are. So any selection or recommendation within that field is certainly acceptable to us.
And if you do choose to have an election, I'm assuming as well that all five currently identified candidates and any others who might be willing to step forward before that election would be on that ballot?
It could be, it could be anybody in Division Four is certainly capable of running. It could be anybody in Division Four is certainly capable of running, and I would assume that these five gentlemen would be part of that. But it might result in new folks coming into the equation.
And should this, should this end up falling to the Board of Supervisors where we would actually have a binding role, who would pay for that election?
I believe it would be the registered voters and/or the taxpayers within Division Four. I'm not sure on the specifics of that. Maybe counsel knows that.
If I understood the question correctly, if the Board of Supervisors is appointing, there's essentially no cost to it. You would have an interview process, not unlike when we fill some of the other elected positions in our history. I think Supervisor was recently appointed a few years back, and that's an example. We've done it for the auditor. It has a little bit of administrative costs and time and trouble for the Board, but it's essentially a neutral cost. It's just another hearing for the Board of Supervisors and some staff time preparing for it.
Okay. If I may, I'm actually referring to the first page of the NID letter dated June 1st, in which they say, "If NID neither appoints a candidate nor schedules a special election within sixty days of the vacancy, the matter will move to Placer County for appointment or election." So it does appear that we would have the ability, if we did not choose to appoint, to call for an election. And I'd just like a clarification on who would pay for that if that were to occur.
Well, I think the answer previously given is it will fall to the taxpayers of the district. And Mr. McCauley will find some charge for that service, and that service charge will be billed back to the taxpayers directly, will be billed back to NID. I'm sure they will pass it on to the district supervisors. I mean, the taxpayers and some ratepayers in some way. But I can't mechanically tell you how that all works out, but it will come out of the district finances, and if they choose to recharge that back to the residents of the district, that's fine with us. Mr. McCauley will discharge the charge, I'm sure, to the special district, as is typical for any special district election that we have in this county.
Okay, so either way, apparently, it would devolve to the voters of the...
It would not be a direct assessment on the voters. It would be an assessment on the district. The district may, through its funding and budgeting processes, find ways to collect that from the district residents. But Mr. McCauley would not be taking a poll tax as people walk in to vote.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that, because I don't think those are legal. Thank you for the answers to the questions, Mr. Drew and Tony. I'm a little concerned that we're putting the cart before the horse here today. We're being asked for a recommendation, which may or may not be taken by NID, at which point in our future is potentially the possibility that this will come back to us for a binding I have some real concerns with that process. I would encourage you, and I've made this known to our Chairman, we had a discussion about this, tomorrow, sit down amongst yourselves, come to a conclusion, work it out between yourselves. If necessary, take it to your voters. I think we should be your last choice, my personal opinion, but I just think we're going about this the wrong way.
Robert, did you have any other comments?
I do, unless anybody else has any questions.
I'm saying you liked, so...
Okay. So I guess, Mr. Drew, if you could give us perhaps, having heard all the comments, some sense of, what chance do you think, what probability, if we gave you a recommendation today, what likelihood would that cause you to break your tie?
Well, it's a great question. I would give it an equal chance, fifty-fifty, that it would influence the decision, but anything differing from that would be pure speculation on my part. I don't think that would be appropriate. We were, of course, hoping for the best scenario in all worlds for this to happen, and I agree to a great extent with Supervisor Montgomery's observation is that this is kind of a step, either in sequence or out of sequence, depending on what happens in the process. I would hope that after further discussions tomorrow, with or without your recommendations, that our Board is able to sit down and make a decision. The likelihood of that happening, based on what I have observed so far, is very slim. Both parties, if you will, have valid reasons for their choices, and their position is very entrenched. I don't know whether you've experienced that before on your Board, but the likelihood of that...
No, not from this group.
Of the likelihood of that happening in today's world is very real, and I can be optimistic, as I'm sure you want me to be, that it can be resolved in-house.
No, actually, I appreciate that. If you were to respond by saying you don't think it'd make any difference at all, then that would cause me to think one thought, but the fifty-fifty causes me to think a different thought. So that thought is, I guess I'm prepared to make a recommendation to my Board as to an individual that I think this Board should either recommend and/or choose in the event that we are charged with making the actual appointment itself. So for me, you know, the great news is we have some fantastic applications. I know three of the people personally, and I know two of them quite well. The bad news, of course, is that when you pick someone, in this case, we'll have four people who are not happy with the choice. But in my case, probably going to be there pretty much one way or the other anyway, so might as well do it now as compared to later, and in the event that we can save the taxpayers' money and have the complete makeup of the NID Board accomplished sooner as compared to later, I think there's value to that regardless. So with that, and that's actually was my next question. Of the people who are here and not knowing, I know that some of you have met some of the folks, and some of you know some of the folks that are the applicants, but if the Board would like to hear from the ones who are here, certainly would want to make sure that everybody's as comfortable with all of this process as possible.
Okay. Excuse me. I will open it up to the public. I shouldn't eat in that last handful of nuts. Open it up to the public, but I would say the reason I didn't meet with any of the candidates is I thought, maybe at some point, we might not even hear this. So I opted for the public forum to listen to the people versus, you know, meeting with them individually. So I'll open it up to any candidate that is here, and I'll give you three minutes to speak, and then when your three minutes are up, would you please sit down, and then we can, we'll bring it back to the Board.
Yeah, it's good. I'll go get some...
I got a soda. I can drink.
Whatever you want.
That almond's sticking in my throat.
Yeah.
Anybody that wants to...
I understand the letter from one of the candidates, I'm sorry, I'm so late, so late, from one of the candidates on his opinion of the problem that's faced, and if she or somebody read it.
All right, if you want to speak on behalf of the candidate, I'll give you three minutes.
Can I read his letter?
Or if you have something to say...
Okay, I'll read his letter.
Okay. Would you please identify yourself?
Oh, I'm Lachlan VIII Ronson. I live at 6604 Garden Bar Road.
I kind of figured it.
To the Board of Directors and so forth. Recently, four other applicants and myself met with you to try and fill the vacant director's seat for District Four. As I was the last applicant to address the Board, I was privileged to be able to hear the viewpoint of the other four applicants, to ask questions, ask of them by you, the remaining directors. It became painfully obvious that the Board wanted to fill the vacant seat not just with someone who would work well with the Board, but rather someone who was just like the remaining four Board members. In fact, I believe that the Board is looking for, is known today, as a yes man. I want to caution the Board in choosing such a person. Throughout history, right to the present, political leaders, as well as other important figureheads, have surrounded themselves with yes men, those who have thought as they did, from Julius Caesar or Augustus, Caesar Augustus through George W. Bush. The important leaders have made it a point to have their advisors tell them just what they wanted to hear. As is obvious, this has never worked out for the public benefit. I would like to suggest that you choose a new director that would bring a divergent viewpoint to the Board. This person would, of course, need to be able to substantiate his viewpoint and not be a negative toward the other directors' views. By having such a director, the Board would gain a broader perspective on many of the issues which would come before the Board in the near future. At this time, you, as the Board of Directors, are considering two of the five applicants. I would suggest that since you had no consensus as to a replacement for the vacant director's seat at your May 27, 2009 BOD session, all the applicants from that meeting are still in contention for that same vacant seat. Therefore, just as you are seeking the Placer County Board Supervisors for their, are asking for their input, please take the time to think openly about my suggestion prior to making a final decision. Thank you for your time on this matter. Eric J. Thompson, who lives at 6600 Garden Bar Road.
Thank you. Next?
Good morning, Chairman Rockholm and the rest of the Board. My name is William Morbeck. I'm a small farmer in Placer County, and I'm part of the Garden Bar cabal here today. I'm in the middle of the Garden Bar area. I started my interest in agricultural water as a field representative for the Rice Growers Association, where I worked throughout Placer County, Sacramento County, and San Joaquin County. And I was familiar with all the water districts and the deliveries of all the waters in the areas. I also represented the area of District Four, which services the surplus water down into Placer County and the western Placer area. After that, I became a small farmer, moved to Placer County, bought acreage with NID. That was my main objective, was to have NID water. I became a small farmer, and at that time, Placer Grown was just starting, and I became one of the beginning Board members of Placer Grown. And as the Board Member of Placer Grown, I was, I served as President and Vice President. I helped with the first Farm Trails map. I helped with the current Internet for Placer Grown. And finally, I helped with the ag marketing program that you all have generously supported. During my, end of my tenure there, I became an appointed member by your Board of the Placer County Agricultural Commission, and that's where I took an active role. I've been appointed three different times by this Board. During my tenure at the Agricultural Commission, I've worked on the Right to Farm Ordinance, the recent Winery Ordinance that you all were involved in, the Water Subcommittee, where we analyzed where potential water could go down in the western Placer area, provided there was mitigation funds available. I analyzed the agricultural environmental impact report for the Tykert project, the Placer, for the Tykert project, for the Vineyard Project, for the Bickford Project, and various other projects. So I derive a lot of my knowledge of the interworkings of the county from my working on the Placer County Agricultural Commission, and I would use that experience that I have gained through the interworkings of the Agricultural Commission, working with all the various agencies, whether it be planning, engineering, building, environmental health, Agricultural Commissioner's Office. So I believe I have an understanding of the overlay of Placer County and the development that you all have led, and I believe I could take that experience to the NID Board and represent as a Director of District Four. And so I request respectfully your vote today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time this morning to hear us out. I don't really have a prepared speech for this morning.
Can I have your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim Bachman, and guess where I live?
Yeah.
3680 Garden Bar Road. My wife and I own eighty acres there. We've lived there for a long time. Bachmans have been NID customers for over fifty years. We have a small cattle operation there, and Paul Williams asked me about a year and a half ago if I'd be interested in taking over his position, running for his position when he retired. First, I told him, no. I had just retired from a long time in construction, and I was kind of enjoying my retirement, and I was involved pretty heavily with Farm Bureau at the time. And so at first, I told him, I didn't think so. And then later on, as, you know, things change, you know, I'm not President of Farm Bureau anymore. I've been out of construction enough to maybe want to get more active again with things. So I told him, yeah, maybe I would do that. So I started driving him to the meeting. So I've been attending NID meetings for a year and a half, hardly missed any. So I have pretty good knowledge of what's been taking place up there. And I also have a long relationship with NID Directors in the past. Warren Wilson was the first one I remember, years ago. I was friends with her family, and we used to always be up there, you know, and always having visions with NID and Bud Vineyard, real good friends with the Vineyard family. So, and then, of course, twenty-seven years, Paul Williams, my neighbor. So I've been really, I feel kept abreast with what NID has been going on, and it's always something that's, I've had an interest in, way back from when I remember as a kid digging the canals on my dad's property. He gave me the right of way to dig the canals, and we had water, and so just, I just have a long history with that. And I think NID in the future, with the relicensing going on, I think it's going to be very interesting times, and I think there's going to be a lot of changes that maybe we don't even know about yet. And I don't think NID knows about them yet. The next few years is going to be very interesting. And I'm an agricultural guy. I've been, NID was built with farmers and ranchers who had good common sense, and I'd just like to keep that tradition going, and I think I could, I think I could be of benefit to NID. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. I'm Mark Adams. I live at 340 Fleming Road in Lincoln. My wife and I grow grapes and make wine there. In my previous life, I was an outside plant planner with Pac Bell, and then SBC. I think my experience with SBC and in the telephone industry, I've worked in right-of-way, regulatory, financial, everything's hinged to financial, as well as the physical part of being outside and building power lines and telephone lines and things of that nature. What I think I would bring to NID, and I'm glad to be considered for that, was as I get a little older in life, I've found that I'm getting better about not hitting the near grind and not being an overspender. With this gray hat, get a little bit of temperament in there, and I think I would be very useful to the Board. One thing especially I would like to do is make myself available to the water users in District Four to see what their problems and issues are, and I certainly would make myself available to them. And we were at Fruitvale School on Sunday night for the fundraiser. What a fine time. She got to speak to Mr. Holmes. So with that, and yes, there are any questions, I'll close. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board.
Well, I'm prepared to ask my colleagues to send the letter to NID, and having heard from three of the candidates, and I think heard some excellent presentations, and knowing that any of the three would do, I think, an excellent job, my request would be that we support Jim Bachman. And there are some key reasons for that. Obviously, Jim's agricultural roots speak for themselves. NID has its history steeped in supporting agriculture. I should note for my colleagues and... I should note for my colleagues and the public that my family farm is what used to be half of Jim's dad's and mom's family farm, so we're neighbors. And the ditch that runs through the property that he discussed? We can help chase each other's lost cows together. But, so I've known Jim almost all my life. He obviously grew up in the Lincoln area, graduated from Lincoln High School. He has seen more change than I have. NID is going to be experiencing some dramatic change, as Jim just mentioned. Particularly, it will now be providing water to the city of Lincoln. That's a significant strategic change and of the mission of Nevada Irrigation District. But Jim's roots are in agriculture, and not forgetting that, but being able to deal with the other, I think are critical, and it's, again, not that the other candidates couldn't do a good job of that mission. I think that Jim's background and the imprinting in his history is just going to provide a perspective that I think will be very important. In addition to that, as he mentioned, the FERC licensing effort that is before NID, as it is on a different project for the county, is essentially, it's ultimately critical to the future of our county. Without water here in Placer County, we're really not much of anything, regardless of what that water use, if it's agriculture or urban. So with that, and with those reasons that I think do distinguish Jim from the rest of the group, I would request my Board send that letter, and hopefully, the Nevada Irrigation District Board then can break their deadlock, get this behind us, and everybody can get back on to business more quickly.
Jim?
Thank you for your comments, Supervisor Wegant. I did meet, speak with all three of the candidates, and they're certainly all qualified, but as I said to a couple of them, that I would defer to your decision since you represent most of the District Four of the NID Board. So I just want to let you know that although they're all qualified, I will support you in recommending Jim Bachman and second your motion.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I'm going to abstain on the procedural grounds I noted before.
Okay. I would second what Jim said about the candidates. I mean, that's a tough call. You look at the list, and three of them have a garden bar. I mean, they're all neighbors, so I think by no means this diminishes any of the candidates that were willing to apply, because, believe me, serving in that capacity is probably even more perilous than what we do. Because you make the wrong decision with water, your neighbors will be coming over to see you instead of your constituents, so. But anyway, thank you all for taking the time to do this, and I would hope that, now you're Board tomorrow, I know this is not a binding thing, but at least it might sway a vote one way or the other, because I don't, I think, and a special election would not be a good thing, because whoever gets this seat is going to have to run in a year, year and a half, or whatever, so.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, thank you for your very sincere discussion, and I'm very hopeful that this will make the difference in our decision, and I really appreciate it, and thank you for allowing me to be before you today.
Thank you. All right. We're done. We will adjourn.